I know that we have been talking about revitalizing that park since the beginning of the year. And we didn't have manpower, and all of us are old, so it would take us a long time to do it. So when I heard his presentation, I got real excited. I said, wow, that's something that we can support. EDC can support it, but we have to go through a long, detailed process. It takes sometimes almost three months legally. So we asked city council to front the money for the project. And once we get it approved through the EDC process, then we get it approved. But I'm sure everybody will support it. We'll reimburse the city. And Councilman Jones was instrumental in letting us know that the city did have a line item amount for that purpose, and we used it, Parks, and we used that money for his project. And I'm telling you, these young people, the Saturday, I'm not a Saturday morning person, but I got up Saturday morning and went over there, and they were working so hard. And they had the old, I mean, the more mature people. Former Mayor Frank Jackson was out there. Mayor Allen was out there. Who else was out there here? But it was a whole lot of people out there. Freddie Roberts was there. It was a whole lot of people. I posted it on Facebook online, but they were actually, they weren't just sitting around talking and drinking water and shooting a breeze. They were working. And so they didn't get a chance to finish all work, because as you know, it gets dark at 5:30 now. So they had to continue the project on Wednesday, and I went out there on Wednesday. And that's when they had mulch, and they were hoeing and digging. His mother was out there putting mulch around the trees. And Freddie Roberts was out there with a suit and towel, painting the fence. And it was just a beautiful thing. We were able to get, after the people behind them, where Panther Hill Apartments is, they own that lot there. They, after they got, saw that what the kids were doing, they decided to cover the fence with green, grass-looking tarp. And we got people in the community to donate pizza and water. I think the guy, Rick, over at Dollar General donated the water and the paper towels and stuff in Panther Hills, donated the pizza. And it became a whole community project. Everybody was involved. And if you had gone out there, I wish I could give him the Youth of the Year Award, because he not only initiated this project that we had been working on for a year, but he brought together so many different segments of the community. Young, old, different races, everybody. Everybody came together and was working, trying to support his efforts. And he did such a great leadership job with the top teens in being the project manager, telling them what to do. He was even telling the mayor what to do. He was even telling his daddy what to do. And so I wish we had a Youth of the Year Award to give him, because of, when I tell you, if you went over there, you felt such enthusiasm and peace and joy. You just wanted to help. So I wish that the community, and I work on that, y'all know I like to work on stuff. I'll work on creating a Youth of the Year Award, and he'll be the top candidate to receive that. But I'm telling you, they're doing a fantastic job, and they may need some more support. So, like, they need more paint, whatever they need, we'll make sure. Even if I have to go in my purse and get it, we'll make sure that they get what they need. And this is going to be such a wonderful pillar of the community. I just see it in it. So I wanted to thank everybody that participated. And I just can't say enough positive things about it. I had kind of lost hope in our young people, when you see a lot of things going on in the news or whatever. But this young man is a pillar of integrity, and he gives me hope for what young people should stand for. So I would really appreciate if y'all gave him a hand. Oh, with the bathrooms. He left with the bathrooms. The bathrooms on the park are going to take some more, higher level professional help. And like I said, that was in our budget, EDC budget, to work on that park. And they might even do some painting or whatever, but they have some plumbing issues that require professional help. And we'll get that. And when spring comes, hopefully, they'll do a fresher up on the park, and we can all just have a community party, thanks to them. But they did a spectacular job.
Good afternoon, good evening. So I want to definitely congratulate Mr. Okofu Jackson on moving forth in his Eagle Scout project. He's the second scout in this community in the last two months to finish the Eagle Scout project. We currently have a third who's currently working on the Eagle Scout project. He's doing a book drive. So if you have a minority book, African-American, Hispanic, Asian book, brand-new books, we're collecting books for the Waller County, the Waller County Library. And so that's due December 11. If you want to drop off a brand-new book, you can drop it off to City Hall or one of the scouts. Being passed out before you is kind of a sheet, a one-pager on the scouts. Troop 1906 here in the community, some of the things we're doing. On Sunday, from 4:00 to 6:00 at St. Francis of Assisi Church, we're going to be having our Court of Honor, where these young scouts will be getting awards, advancement, merit badges, on this Sunday at St. Francis of Assisi from 4:00 to 6:00. During this time, I definitely want to take my hats off, being a scout, one of the scout masters for Troop 1906, from when we founded it nine years ago. As we move, as we continue, this Eagle Scout project came together where we allowed, where we had two organizations who stepped up. So I want to first recognize the City of Prairie View, Mayor David Allen and city council, who found the money in the budget to be able to provide the support for not only Okofu Jackson's Eagle Scout project, but also to support the top teens and Troop 1906. So if we can get Mayor Frank Jackson and the Prairie View city council to come to the front, we have a certificate to give you in appreciation. Mayor David Allen.
But the city council did not, EDC is paying for that.
You got next, but that's okay. I know what I'm doing. No, no, you go get your credit, but thank you. City council, if I can get you to come to the front, as I present the mayor.
Mr. Jackson, if you would, stand on the other side.
Again, we'd like to thank the City of Prairie View, Mayor David Allen, who supported, who was out there on Saturday, working as well. So we definitely love the support of Mayor Allen and city council, who approved it, again, to make sure that we had the upfront money. It's important how we all have to come together. Everybody plays a little part in making big things happen. So again, thank you. Next, I would like to definitely bring up the Prairie View 4B Economic Development. Is there any representatives here? Councilwoman Williams, Dr. Vina Brown, if you'd like to come up, because we have a certificate of appreciation for recognizing, supporting outstanding youth in our community. It's your turn, ma'am. You need some help?
Yeah, that would be so nice of you. Thank you.
But we did, EDC is paying for this. The money for this project is coming from EDC.
That's Councilwoman, do you want to come up? All right, thank you very much. You ready? I don't want you to miss this. Are y'all done? Thank you very much. There you go. Again, thank y'all again for supporting us. Remember, we also have a third scout, December 11. If you're doing the book drive, and on Sunday, we have our Court of Honor, St. Francis of Assisi. Mr. Jackson, thank you very much.
Item 11, discuss and take action to approve Erskine Payne to do the annual audit. Mr. Payne, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for moving it up. I'm sorry. I'm going down here fast. I know somebody's at 11 o'clock today, so I wouldn't earn it or make it.
Okay, just tell us.
Before you have to go to do the financial audit, yeah, it's a plan to use very high level. An example, when I'm looking at cash, all I do is I go through a bank reconciliation. Make sure your accountant is doing, who will talk of procedures and get a bank reconciliation. I scan, look for anything to jump out at me. That's it. It's at a high level. It's not an internal audit. So cash is not a problem. We don't accept cash. Well, yeah, that's just. When I say cash, I mean the bank's papers. Record salary.
I know, I know that over this last couple of years, we talked about doing an internal audit. Is that, was that, is that all for? I know over the last few years or so, we talked about doing an internal audit. And so I'm asking, where are we at more?
From an internal audit standpoint, that's, that was what was directed to Mr. Johnson and city treasurer. Yes, they've been meeting and going to get the procedures and stuff on the internal audit.
But this is for the annual budget audit that's in compliance with GFOA?
No. But he proposed, well, I want to say a year ago, that we do an internal audit.
I suggested that you do, if that's what you were looking for, the things you were asking for, need to be done, you need to do an internal audit.
So that's why.
And that's taking place?
Yes, taking place, ma'am. I'm currently doing.
So one, I guess maybe, do this council have the information that Mr. Payne is talking about? Because I don't. I know we've used Mr. Payne for about the last five years in reference to his proposal. Again, we usually give him information, he gives it back to us. My just concern is he suggested some recommendations, and just want to make sure that you, can you check off or highlight how many of those recommendations that, so we can compare kind of how we've been moving our progress. Because we've done some things. We got a city treasurer, we asked for an internal audit between our outside accountant, Mr. J.J. Johnson, and our new city treasurer. And so we have a number of things under recommendation you've given us. So we want, so I think what Councilman Jones was asking was, council have asked over, you know, the last three years, what were the recommendations that you've given from your audit? And where are we at with those? To try, how to say, hey, I gave you five recommendations, you've done three of them. We need to get these two, or kind of just give us an update.
Yeah, we can do that, actually. I knew about the six separate random break and everything. Makes my job a little easier and everything. And I will write that up, you know, report. It doesn't go in official audit, but just a management letter I say.
Did we address in your recommendations?
Right.
Councilman Jones.
It does say, is, are, is this the same recommendations in which you, same contract that you gave us in the past? Or, well, I guess that wouldn't be a question towards you, it would be a question towards the mayor, because we don't have the information within our package, so we don't.
Well, basically, it's the same cost, it's the engagement level, it's a form level.
What's the amount?
Same, sixteen.
Eight on the front and eight, I think.
Yeah, everything's changed, the nature dates.
I'll just ask.
Well, I know, and I'm just telling you, it's a form, form level. I pull out straight after book. I change the dates and everything. And the engagement level is a form level that's required.
I move that, well, first of all, we don't, yeah, we can't do this, because we don't have the documents in front of us. And I don't think our legal counsel allows to, well, I don't know if we can, if can we, or do we just give that to the mayor?
Last time we did.
It's up to the city council. I will remind you that our firm is recommending that you move to a formal professional services contract with all of your outside contractors. And there's a form that we recommend for that. You don't have to do that, but we haven't seen this agreement either. So whatever is the pleasure of the council, it's up to you.
What is the timeframe, Mr. Mayor? Or, I mean, well, what is the timeframe on when we, on when this needs to happen?
December 4. That was because I, this is the written engagement, I said, October 31st.
So you have a copy?
Yeah.
So could we just get this copy so we can approve it?
Yeah.
So we don't have to put it off?
Right. Yeah, like I said, I just.
And so if we can get, I guess we can go ahead and, we want to have the approval on the basis of the attorneys?
That's funny. We went through the same thing last week, to where, that was to our citizens' benefit, to where, within a certain amount of days, we would have got the water system changed. But due to the fact that our attorney didn't see, we didn't make a decision upon it, and that's why it's brought back to today's meeting. So we know that we are on a tight rope, but if our councilor is advising for us to go, for us to go through something a certain way, in a certain process, in which last week we followed, I think it's only right that we continue to follow, so that way we could be on the same page across the board.
And, and I don't mind interjecting, that professional service contract, it may need to be something separate from the audit. It's two different things.
No, what she's saying is, any, for anyone who does, works on behalf of the city, should sign a professional service contract, and that's what we've been trying to do.
Okay.
And so we know it's an audit, but it is something that we want to have. And so I guess the best way is to rectify this, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if we need to either have, put this on the next agenda, or a special meeting prior to, in the next seven days. And so we may have to do that.
Or we could do it pending the, because it's a professional services contract to do the audit. You see, so it's not.
I agree, but, Mr. Mayor, this is the same thing why we didn't approve ABR the last time.
Now, ABR went to you guys, so I have no idea why y'all didn't give it to the council. I would involve in the ABR workshop. Y'all were sitting on that.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I ask that we have a special meeting within the next week or so, so that way we can prove this and get this done.
We'll pick a date.
Does next Monday work? Next Monday?
Same time? Six o'clock.
Next Monday, six? Next, uh, special meeting.
6:00 PM to.
So a special meeting on the 16th?
Excuse me, excuse me, please. Go ahead, let's see. Uh, Mr. Attorney? What are you actually asking for? Because we normally.
Mr. J.J.
Go ahead.
We have already, we agree to expedite, speak, to expedite the situation. We want to approve it, but we just had the same issue come up at the last meeting, and we gave another example. And what we're saying is that we want to be able to follow the process that's, is, hopefully, that we can move, use moving forward, and we've already agreed on a date to do number 11.
We're switching everyone over, just like we did with yourself, to a professional service, but we've got this.
Okay, well, we'll just answer the question. He asked you, answer me. What else does he have to provide besides the professional?
May not have to provide anything, but it's just going to be switching over to a contract that our city attorneys has everyone switching over to, to do the audit. It's still be doing the audit, but it'll just be a different contract.
So you're going to provide?
We'll take care of it. We'll take care of it.
All right, well, that's been answered.
Thank you, sir.
So I moved that.
Yeah, that was my. Because then if we have any questions, you can available.
Yeah.
So you just want to be in contact with the attorney?
Yeah. I'll send everything to you, and I've already emailed you, so I have your email address.
I moved that with a special meeting, Monday, December 16th, in regards to item 11, discuss and take action to approve Erskine to do the annual audit.
We probably move the second item 11, discuss and take action to approve Erskine Payne CPA to be in the audit, be held at 6:00 PM on Monday, December 16th, here. You heard the motion, ready for a question?
Of course.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. And we're back to item two. Establishing an African-American historic preservation commission in the City of Prairie View. Mr. Bows and Ms. Stafford. Introduce yourselves and let us know.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tanya DeBose, and I am here wearing two hats tonight. One is on behalf of the Historic Black Towns and Settlements Alliance, to which former Mayor Johnny Ford of Tuskegee, Alabama, is founder, and Prairie View, City of Prairie View is a member of. And also, as a member of the Texas African-American Heritage Council, where I also have two other members that are here, and one is on his way. He's on IT and instead of 290. And so he is on his way. So therefore, Black Lives Home, she is the president of the African-American Genealogy Society, the only African-American genealogy society in the state of Texas. She is responsible for just about fifty markers that represent African-American history and culture in the state. Also, Frank Jackson, y'all know him, former mayor, he's a walking history book. And so I stand here representing both of those organizations. And I'm going to talk first, and then Lisa will come and introduce herself and her capacity, which she's going to be sharing today. And so I'm honored to bring greetings to this city today, because Prairie View is one of the most historic cities here in the state of Texas. It joins with all of the other states as being one of the places where African-Americans actually established their own city and actually incorporated it. And I'm hearing that it's been fifty years since you all had an incorporation. And so it is an honor to be here this year, to be able to bring this forth. This particular establishment of an African-American Heritage Commission is necessary, because we've all seen on the news, the Sugar Land 95. We've seen on the news where they're finding all sorts of cultural and historical resources that are significant to African-Americans, but there's nobody protecting them. There's nobody representing them. And here in Prairie View, I know that there's a lot of African-American cultural and historical resources that have not been protected, and nobody is looking after them being protected. And so this particular commission would be a plus for all of us, as I am in Harris County, I am in the first black city in the state of Texas, which is Independence Heights. And we are working toward an African-American Heritage Commission in the county, in Harris County, and there are other counties that are also following in our footsteps. This comes at a welcome time, because Congresswoman Shiva Jackson Lee, through HR 434, just established the Emancipation Heritage Trail, and which it starts in Gabiston, and it will come all the way through. And if this establishment of this council is made, then it would allow for the study of the resources here in Prairie View to be included in that. Across the state of Texas, we know that Texas was the last frontier for slavery. We know that our history is not just founded in slavery. We did so many things other than that, and nobody has told that story. And so this story is an untold story. What Prairie View has to contribute to that story as a state, across the state, is very important. And so I bring welcome support from both of those organizations on the establishment, hopefully, of an African-American Cultural Heritage Commission. Also, I'd like to add that this particular commission, as we approach the 87th legislature, this commission would then also be recognized, because we are also moving toward a statewide African-American Heritage Commission, because, again, no one is protecting our resources. Thank you.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Lisa Stafford. For the record, it's S.T.A.F.F.O.R.D. It's misspelled on the agenda. To Mayor Allen and the members of the city council, and the members and citizens of Prairie View and Prairie View, Texas, I stand before you as a child of Prairie View, having grown up here and have family ties to this city. I know in my whole lifetime, there's never been a heritage, a cultural heritage society of any kind that addresses the rich history that Prairie View, Texas, has. I am a member of the Waller County Historical Society, and I have sat on that committee, on the Historical Markers Committee, for about two years. And I do know that if I'm not present at those meetings, they don't address anything that has to do with anything, that has to do with anybody African-American. So it's incumbent upon me to be at every meeting, you know, once a quarter. But back to Prairie View, because I know that the Waller County Historical Society, you know, is not really interested in addressing the specific needs of our city, our history could get lost if we don't establish a heritage, an African-American Heritage Society for this city. And as Ms. DeBose just mentioned to you, this would be a stepping stone for other cities to follow. So there are historical societies in just about every little county and community across the state of Texas. I have attended heritage tourism conferences in Austin that address some of the issues. But again, we're not, we're being left out of the narrative. So if we continue to allow that to happen, which we shouldn't, it's a travesty to allow that to happen. And this, the 50th year of the existence of Prairie View, the incorporation of Prairie View, would be a perfect time to establish, you know, the historical commission for the City of Prairie View, just for the sake of the heritage tourism. And if you look at heritage tourism, and I'm going to read something really briefly off my phone, that addresses that. So heritage tourism is an economic driver for many cities. And if you don't believe me, just go up the street about four or five miles to Waller, Texas, and see what they're doing to their downtown. The main street of Waller, Texas, is being transformed, because they know the importance of heritage tourism. Hempstead is already known, because it's, you know, the older city in the county, and it was the county seat. The amount of traffic that moves from, just between Waller and Hempstead and bypasses Prairie View is, you know, someone I'm sure here has the numbers. But there is no reason right now for anybody to necessarily stop in the city of Prairie View. I'm not talking about the university. I'm talking about the city of Prairie View. So by establishing this commission, and eventually a society, which would include members of the community, you know, interested parties, we could raise the heritage tourism in this area tremendously, or just exponentially, because it doesn't exist right now. But real briefly, off the Texas Historical Commission website, just a few little statistics. American heritage brings in to Texas, heritage tourism in Texas is a $57.3 billion industry, just in Texas alone, and accounts for more than 10.5% of all travel in the state. So if we could just get a piece of that for our city to increase the revenue, but more than just increasing revenue, it's important that we don't lose the history. And, you know, years from now, when no one remembers my name, or anything that I might have accomplished in my life, we want the Heritage Society to still exist for the future generations, for those that have come after us, so that they know the rich history of this area. And like Mayor Allen has mentioned before, the heritage of this area doesn't just start with Alta Vista Plantation. That is where a lot of people want to start the story. The story of this area, this land, there's a richer story behind that. And we want to uncover that, but we need a formalized body to be able to do that. So that's why we were wanting to establish this historical, cultural preservation. So a little bit, just a tiny little bit about my background. Like I said, I grew up here, but I went away and got my education at the University of Texas in Austin. But I'm back. I've been here about five years, and I actually work at Prairie View. I work at Prairie View. um, I work at Prairie View, in a university, as a special collections librarian, so I work with the archives and special collections for the university. And what I have discovered and know to be true is that the city of Prairie View has no formalized archives. What there is to know about the city of Prairie View is in the archives at the university. And that's unfortunate, it really is, because the city itself needs to have its own archives, in pictures, or documents, or something. And they're somewhere, they, they might be in, maybe somebody's garage, I don't know, but there is no formalized place where we can go and find our fifty-year history of the city. So, besides uncovering sort of what this area was prior to now, you know, we want to make sure that there is a place where schoolchildren, Jones Elementary Kids, future researchers can come and find out about the history of Prairie View, and then duplicate that across the states, across the counties in the state of Texas, and eventually, across the nation. So, I'll end there, and if you all have any questions for Tanya, or myself, or Deborah, now's the time.
Do you got, well, well, I'm pretty sure, uh, the draft is, uh, based upon what you guys, uh, feel like you guys need to incorporate this and get this started.
Okay, so I didn't mention, because it's not anything the council has yet, there is an ordinance that we're wanting to put forth, so that it can be codified into the ordinance for the city of Prairie View, so that it can be... Oh, you do have the draft, okay. So that's, that's a working draft, that's a working draft that we have, um, there's some modifications that we are seeing that are particular to this city, that need to be made to that draft, but the ordinance is what we're trying to push through.
Okay, so do you think that you'll have this ordinance down by next Monday?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Jones?
I move that, uh, I, that we take action on item number two, December sixteenth, at six P.M., at six P.M. with item number eleven.
You want this carried over to the December sixteenth meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's, we probably moved and seconded that item number two, establishing an African-American Historic Preservation Commission in the city of Prairie View, be carried over to the December sixteenth, uh, meeting.
That we take action. So, right now, if we put it this way, establishing, it doesn't mean that we take action, to just...
But we'll have an ordinance, okay, yeah. Uh, you've heard the motion, ready for the discussion?
The discussion is, again, the same certification that we put, uh, discuss, consider, and take action, instead of establishing, on, on the, uh, the agenda item, and then we have the, whatever, whatever we're going to approve, we wanna get a copy of that, and if we can also get the attorney to, uh, help with this.
Now, Counselor, you have it, and there was some thing...